Good evening.
Good evening.
We will start the meeting off tonight with prayer led by Mayor Pro Tem Michael Balls and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Flores.
Everybody bow to his if you will. In the name of God, the most gracious, the most merciful. We thank you today for allowing us to be here at the city council meeting and to do your will. Please show us the way, the straight way, the way that you have bestowed upon us to do the right things for your grace and mercy. And Lord, please look over our city council, our staff, and all employees of the city to make sure they are safe during these times. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its essence.
You may be seated. I have a little housekeeping to do. I'm actually with my colleagues because we have a tendency of forgetting. I need everyone to silence their phone, please. Our guests in the audience would like you to silence your phone as well. I'd like to welcome you to this meeting, to this public hearing. Everyone will be treated with dignity and respect. We are going to refrain, when someone is speaking, we're going to refrain, I'm sorry, from interrupting them, booing, any obnoxious behavior. Let me remind you, this is a business meeting. Let me remind you. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams. Yes. Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Here.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
And Mayor Moore.
Present.
We have eight members present, one absent. You have a forum, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any announcements?
Yes, I do have a couple this evening. I want to remind everyone that City Hall will be closed this Thursday and Friday, December 23rd and 24th, for the Christmas holiday. And then we will be closed next week, Thursday and Friday, December 30th and 31st, for the New Year holiday. And also as a reminder, the holidays will not delay your trash pickup. Again, the holidays will not delay any trash pickup. Mayor, that takes us to public input.
I'd like to welcome all those who have signed up to address the council tonight. Please speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you're trying to say. You will be called to the podium by the city clerk. You have three minutes to speak, which will be timed by the city clerk. Remember, I'm asking that everyone be courteous and respectful to the person who is speaking. Madam Clerk, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Nancy Kepke.
Good evening, Mayor Moore, Mayor Pro Tem Balls, City Manager Morales, and City Council Members. I'm Nancy Kepke from the City of Saginaw Arts Commission, which was created in 1986 by Mayor Larry Crawford so that there would always be a commission fully dedicated to enhancing the quality of life in our community. And for over 30 years, we have done just that by being a champion for arts and culture. We've created many youth and family programs, all offered free to the citizens of Saginaw. We just held our winter art fair and are beginning to plan the annual student art show, and I'm sure many of you have attended that with your children. Next spring, we'll hold our Art and Garden Festival, and then our summer concert series, all free events and in keeping with our vision of enhancing Saginaw's lifestyle. None of this would have been possible, however, without a unique collaboration between the city and the Arts Commission in 1990. Our goal was to transform a boarded-up city building into an arts and community center, our home, which is now known as the Anderson Enrichment Center. It is truly a gem. But in the 1980s, when you crossed the bridge, you were greeted with a boarded-up building, not a very positive or welcoming message. But together, we were able to raise nearly $1 million to renovate the building and the grounds. We were making transformational things happen. The city now has a daunting task ahead: how to best utilize a windfall of money known as ARPA. To bring people back into the city, we need arts and culture, and we need to support those organizations that provide that, our symphony, art museum, choral society, community theater, the Temple Theater. These organizations took big hits last year, and they need all the support you can give. The Arts Commission also wants you to know that we are here to support you as you embark on the difficult task of distributing these funds. Although on a much smaller scale, we administer grant programs for the state of Michigan, and we strive to ensure that program outcomes are achieved in an effective, efficient, and equitable manner. And we would be honored to work with you to achieve this goal with ARPA. We want you to know that your Arts Commission is behind you 100% as you move forward with ARPA. We appreciate you and all you do for our city, and we urge you to support the quality of life which arts and culture provide as you make your decisions about who and what will receive ARPA support. Thank you. But I have to say, we drove by the Water Works on the way here, and it is magnificent.
Can I motion to extend your time for 45 seconds?
Oh, can. I'm sorry. It's just magnificent.
We have to take a vote real quick.
We have no support, Mayor Williams.
I did.
No.
It's been moved to support to allow Ms. Nancy to have 45 seconds.
I'm sorry. It'll just take me 20 seconds. I mean, Nancy, you have to stop, please. We have a motion on the floor.
Just give me one minute, Miss Nancy.
Take care of some business, and then we'll get back with you.
We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion?
Oh, my goodness.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Ms. Nancy, you have 45 seconds to finish your.
Not yet.
As soon as the clerk gets the buzzer right, because we wanted to hear what you were getting ready to say.
Are you ready? I'm ready. Go ahead, Nancy. I just wanted to thank our city council and Tim Morales and everybody that works for the city for making that Water Works display happen every year. We've all enjoyed it since we were children. It's such an uplifting, happy thing to see, and I just want to thank all of you for continuing to make that happen, no matter what, no matter COVID, no matter what, and thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Thor Rasmussen.
Mayor Moore, Mayor Pro Tem Balls, City Council, thank you for the work that you do to move Saginaw forward for so many. My name is Thor Rasmussen, and like many in Saginaw, I wear a lot of hats. Among those hats are being a husband, a father of four young critics, I mean, children, an occasional speech-language pathologist at St. Mary's, engaged in full-time work at the Saginaw Art Museum and Temple Theater, while running a small photography business, and service on the Saginaw Arts and Enrichment Commission. When I moved to Saginaw in November of 2009, it did not know a soul. My wife was seven months pregnant with our firstborn, and I thought we would be passing through onto a different metropolitan region after a few years. However, I quickly came to understand the richness of Saginaw's ability to make ideas come to life, for people to work together towards common goals, and the rich passions that thrive in an environment like this one. I also noticed that all this happens so well because of the creativity that underpins the casual art observer and the ardent champion. As deliberations about the best way to move forward with utilizing Saginaw's ARPA resources continue, I am an advocate for leveraging funds by incorporating arts organizations directly into the focus areas through a transparent, independent, and coordinated process that includes accountability and concrete sustained transformational change. While it may be a matter of convenience to group arts and cultural institutions in with other worthy nonprofit agencies and organizations, the fluidness and diversity of the arts make this group a unique collaborators to drive economic development, address the needs of youth and family, play a role in addressing health needs, especially mental health, and caring for neighborhoods, and even housing. When I became a parent almost 12 years ago, there are many who said of my son, "He'll grow up fast." I had no idea what that meant back then, but now I do. And I also see 10 years into the future, where I will have to give an account of why he should stay in his hometown, or if he's gone off somewhere, why he should return. I want to look him in the eye and have a clear answer. Saginaw is the most creative place you can imagine, a place that is vibrant because of the artistic current that flows through the people. The work and decisions we make now will allow that answer to be the absolute truth, not only for my own kiddos, but many other stakeholders. Let's make art the thread that connects us.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Audrey Beatty.
Chief, can you check the hallway just a sec, please? Thank you.
Chief, I'd like to.
Okay. Let's go to April Williams.
Good afternoon, City Council. I am here in front of you today because I have a business. It is located at 208, some might say 210, I don't know why it has two addresses, Florence, here in Saginaw, Michigan. And I started that business with the thought of growing, and with growing my brand and just helping others. And that didn't happen. When I started, I did what I needed to and was told to, to open it. And shortly after that, my water was shut off, and my license was revoked. I cannot tell you why. I cannot tell you why, because I asked time and time, why? No reason. That was like back in, I believe, 2015, and I just found out this year, I was told the reason why, because the customer said to do that. That's me. So that was not true at all. So I just kept coming and coming. I never would give up. I was up here every day to see stemples. I got the runaround. Every time I tried to see if I could clear it up, I got the runaround. It did not matter what I tried to do, okay? I got the runaround. Still, now today, same thing. They met with me at my building, and I was told before I get my water on that I would need to fix my parking lot. I would need to fix a few things going on in the inside, which I didn't know had anything to do with getting your water on, okay? So back to, you know, it really discouraged me. So I had actually put my building up for sale because of this, because I was trying to do everything I can. I'm one person. And I'm looking at the city being these big people, you know, that I got to tackle. So it stressed me out so bad that I stopped even trying. And then, you know, this year, I just tried again, and I'm still getting the same results. But I did speak with the city council, which was Ms. Monique, and she did direct me in the right direction of helping me with that. But it's still like my license, it's still a lot of things that I'm fighting for, and I don't understand why, to have a business. I just don't understand why. So that's why I am here in front of the mayor and U. City Council people, because I don't have any understanding.
I'd like to motion to extend your time for 45 seconds.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The clerk will sit for 45 more seconds. It's April.
Okay. So I'm just still stuck at why?
Wait, wait, wait. Wait till she gets it going.
Okay.
Okay, I'm ready, April.
Okay. So I just don't have any understanding of why I have to go through all of this for my business, and why my license was revoked, my water was shut off, no apparent reason. I don't have a bill. My pipes weren't busted. Oh, but unfortunately, they did. They did. So now I got a lot of things going on with my building just because of this situation. So I just want to see what I can do to get some help with what's going on with this, with my water situation. And why? If I'm following the rules to do what I need to do to open my business, I shouldn't have to have that.
Someone will get back with you from the city managers. He will assign it to someone, and all of the city council members will get a copy of what he is sending to Ms. Williams.
Okay. I thank you so much for giving me the time to speak with you guys. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kwame Okua.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Nana Kwame Okua. I prefer to go by Kwame. I've been adopted by this city since 2008, when I moved here for school. And as a city resident and as a financial professional, I've been blessed to have a business within the city, also providing financial and accounting services. I have realized, over the few years that I've been practicing, that one of the major challenges that so many businesses face, and even residents, we are looking at bringing the city back, has been financial planning and just having a good financial system in place. And as a businessperson that have been providing accounting and financial services, I am looking for an opportunity to collaborate with the city to really work in any way possible to provide these services to the resident, the business, and the city itself. Because I truly believe that as we are having an opportunity to receive these funds to rebuild the city and get the city moving forward, that finances is going to be at the foundation of it. And I'm very passionate about it. I'm a city resident. My business is located within the city, and I'm looking for ways I can collaborate with the city and its members and its businesses to see what I could do to provide services in a way that will benefit the city and benefit its members and its residents. So I've also left my business cards, I think, with everybody, and I look forward to hearing back from the city soon. So I just wanted to let you all know. My business is called Tri-City Business Services. We provide taxes. We provide tax planning services, financial planning. We do a 360 financial planning service. So you can think about it, anything related to accounting and finance, we do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Our next speaker is Henry Hill.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, City Council members. Mayor Moore, my business proposal is Hills' Second Chance, Second Chance Organization for Youth and Adult Offenders. This program is designed to help youth and adults offenders reenter into society. I have a passionate desire for children and to be able to help children. And I don't feel no children, no child out here should go through and experience what I went through. I did 37 years incarcerated. During the 37 years I was incarcerated, in my late 20s, I was struggling how to read and write. And I see so many brothers and sisters out here that's uneducated, right down to this day. They don't know how to read, they don't know how to write, they don't have nobody mentor them to them at all. And it's a shame, it's sad. And for them to experience that, it caused a great deal of frustration, a great deal of anger. And I was so excited to get out here, to mentor, to children, to be a part of programs and all that dealing with youth. I signed up, put an application in for Waverine Center when I first come home. They said I was a perfect candidate for the job. After they did the background checks, seeing I had a felony conviction, they said, "Unfortunately, you can't get the job." And it was devastating because I was looking forward to working with the children. For the last two weeks, I've been going out to Carlton Middle School. I got a cousin that go out there to the little middle school. I've been coaching on the side for the kids out there. His team was 0-3. The last two weeks, they don't win the last two games, me coaching them on the side. Yeah, Saturday, when I went out there, the recreation director asked me, did I want a job as being a coach? They need me for a basketball coach or a football coach. And I told them, yes. They said, "Would anything hinder you from getting a job?" And I said, "Well, I have a felony conviction." And due to my felony conviction, I even wrote Judge Donnell Jackson concerning my felony conviction, because he was the judge that resentenced me. He said, "To whoever it may concern, my felony conviction should not be held against me." But the point that I'm making is, society gave up on me when I was in prison for 37 years. Let's not give up on these children. Let's help these children get to the next level. I'm willing to do whatever I have to do, get my 100% into helping these children, helping Saginaw to become a safer and better community, but I can't do it by myself. I need y'all help. Let's come together and make Saginaw a better community. And one of the things that deeply concern me right now, today, when I come home, I was so excited about coming home. I realize I come home to a war zone. Young men out here killing women, shooting and killing women. This is sad. A couple of.
I motion to extend this time for 45 seconds.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any questions? For the vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Give her.
Got it.
You got it?
Got it. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you, Ms. Nancy.
Good, Henry. Continue.
Little over a month ago, a good friend of mine's son shot and killed him. Shot him several times and killed him. Just got out of prison, still on the teller. Now, his father gone, he going back to prison for the rest of his life. And this is sad, you know? This is sad. When I talk, see kids, and I tell them, "Why is you carrying guns?" They can't even explain it to me why they carrying guns. And each and every day, our life of being in danger because you got, no programs out here to educate these children. We need to put a program in place, and unfortunately, if we don't, this type of behavior is going to continue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shontella Williams. Am I saying that right? Thank you. Sorry if I botched it.
I'm Shontella Williams. My concern is, so I called about the saw that's being put down, and I understand that you guys may be on a budget, but I just feel our side streets, we should be able to get our side streets too, because we all pay our taxpayers money. So why shouldn't we target some side, our side streets? They were very, very icy. And so when I called and talked to the gentleman, which I can't remember his name, but he opened up Saturday morning because they had the trash, and he called me about 7:30 in the morning. And I told him, unfortunately, it was warm, and it's all gone, but he directed me to the right people to talk to, and he told me to come up here to talk to y'all, and he said it is a contract. He did tell me at certain times that they do come out, how much snow to get. But I was just coming to speak for the rest of the people about the, at least, let's sort the side streets. I understand the main streets, yes, we got to get to the hospitals, yes, we got to use the main drives, the highway, but let's get to the side streets. We have elderly people out here too, they have to get around too. So that's all, that's my concern.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our last speaker tonight, Alexander Verdone.
Last week, I spoke about the Ojibwe Island Community Project to the council, but this week, I'm going to speak and invite the city, the general city, as well as the county and the region. On Ojibwe Island, a beautiful park in our city, you know, there's a very contentious monument showcasing only one kind of history. And our region has so many different histories, so many different people with families that have been here for a long time, and families that are newly arrived, and families in between. And so the Ojibwe Island Community Project, a group of us have come together, and we're kind of organizing, and we're speaking with the genealogy department at Hoyt Library to help begin an oral histories archive, in which we want to hear the stories and the memories of the families of the region in their own voices. We not only want to hear those voices and record them, and then have them in an archive in which anyone can access as an enrichment of our history, but we're also looking for people that are willing to collect those stories, either from their own families, from their communities, or people that just want to volunteer. And so I am calling to, I'm here to invite anyone that would like to participate. You can email us at saginaworalhistories@gmail.com. Saginaworalhistories@gmail.com, and that's S-A-G-I-N-A-W. Oral is O-R-L, O-R-A-L. Histories, H-I-S-T-O-R-E-S, at gmail.com. And our first gathering is going to be virtually on the 14th of January. And so if you're interested in participating, please email us, and we will be happy to include you, and so that way you can, I don't know, celebrate in our various histories and the stories, beautiful storytelling. Anyway, that's all I got to say. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, our next order of business is remarks of council.
That's on me, I'm sorry. Councilperson, you have three minutes as well. We will start tonight with Councilmember Ostache.
Thanks, Mayor. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's meeting. We have, again, a wonderful turnout. It's always good to see everybody here and for everybody watching at home. I want to thank all of our public speakers or public input for coming out tonight, because you do take the time to come out on an evening, a lot after work, and speak to us. And like the mayor said, those items will be addressed, and then someone get back with us. So again, thanks for coming out. Mr. Verdone. I've already got some people in mind, so I wrote your email address down, so I'll see if I can get a couple of people that can do your virtual history recordings. Anybody looking to go to Delta College next year that would like to apply for a scholarship, I did get an email on that. They are taking their applications right now, so it's for their 2022, 2023 year, accepting from December 15th through February 2nd of 2022, and you can go to delta.edu/scholarships to apply. I was asked to talk about an event that is coming up. It's on December 23rd. It's at the Gideon Christ Community Church, and they are going to be doing a Christmas To Remember program. Doors open at 5:30. Program starts at 6:00 PM. It's at 9:15 Federal Avenue. Welcome to our last meeting of the year. It's been a good year. Again, we were able to move the city forward, and I do want to thank all of our residents and businesses, neighborhood associations, volunteers, nonprofits, just any individual or group that had volunteered or did something for the city. I just want to say thank you for everything you did, for your love for our city, just as much as we love our city as well. Also, to have a safe and happy holiday season, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year to everybody. See you in January.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Flores.
Thank you, Mayor, and hello, Saginaw. It's good to see everybody again. First, to Mr. Hill, we need you. So keep, I know this is going to be your second time coming here, but I'd love to speak with you after the meeting, but we need you to kind of do intergenerational mentoring. you after the meeting, but we need you to kind of do intergenerational mentoring. That's something that's definitely allowed in the ARPA dollars. And we need to kind of figure out the best way that we can harness your experience to reduce crime. Yeah. And then also, thanks so much to everybody that had contributed to the Christmas for Angels program that happened at the Civica. That was an amazing thing that I got to see. Luckily, Councilman Copeland came, so we got to take a picture with Santa. That was really cool. But to see the look on the face of young children that are less fortunate, but also had a really good smile for the fact that they got some really good toys, that's the best money I'm ever gonna spend in my entire life. So, that's great. And then last, yeah, like Councilmember Ostas said, Happy New Year, Merry Christmas. But please, if you are not vaccinated and look into that information, go to Saginaw County Health to see if you can reconcile any issues that you have with being vaccinated. Otherwise, if you are vaccinated, please get a test. These are very troubling and trying times right now with the county, with the state, and with the nation. So we need to be as vigilant as we can be with this new variant. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Seth. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. What a year we have had. All right. As we are at our last meeting for the year, I'm really excited just to see the community interaction. I think from the first meet, well, that was during COVID, so that doesn't count. There was no interaction. But just seeing the interaction now throughout this year has been really great, just to give that notion that Saginaw is moving. Saginaw is moving forward. The various pieces are starting to come together, which is beautiful. And I think that big thing, I think earlier in the year, I was talking about the pieces being the community and the city working together. And I'm glad to see the communication is there and it's growing and people are knowing who to talk to. And I think that's a really amazing thing as we continue to move our city forward. This past weekend, I did share with the Salvation Army and Christmas with Angels and just the love and the gifts and the families that have been impacted. I think one of the things that I just took away from both of those is just sometimes you just need a reminder how blessed you are. Sometimes you just need that reminder that, you know, what you may be facing, someone is going through something a little worse than you. And it just gives you that moment to pause and be grateful, be thankful, just for that moment. So I am thankful for this opportunity to be here and serving with my colleagues this year. I am going to end mine, I'm not, I don't have much to say today, but I am gonna end mine with a verse. And it's, "I wish you a Merry Christmas. I wish you a Merry Christmas. I wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year." All right. So Happy Holidays, everyone. Please continue to stay safe as you gather with your family. This is a season of love and happiness, but I'm alone and COVID is still here, so please make sure you're washing your hands, masking up, and taking care of each other. Thank you.
So you have a singing council person and a dancing council person. Who can ask anything other than what we offer to you guys? Next, we will have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Good evening, everyone. I definitely appreciate each and every one of you all have listened to what you had to say to council today and will definitely look into everything. I would also like to wish you all a happy holiday. Stay safe. And also, I had a meeting today, and I won't get into that, but in that meeting, I did say I refuse to go into the new year with contention. And I've gotta say it because like I said, I won't go into the new year. I'm an adult. If I have anything to say to my colleagues or anyone else, I say that. I don't need anyone to speak for me. And I would hope that my name is not mentioned in any, anymore, in anything negative, because it's not going real well. My integrity will not be questioned. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I feel like I should sing a song now. Good evening, everybody. Keep my comments short. Ms. Williams, just so you know, I literally bought a truck because the side streets are not salted. So I feel your pain. I hope that that's something that we could do as a city, but we're in the situation we're in right now, hopefully in the future to get better. Mr. Hill, what I have to say right now does not, is not directed towards you because you're already, you're already doing these things. And it's a question. I'm excited about the ARPA money and how our community is coming forward with proposals as it relates to our youth. But I really question, would we be coming forward if this money wasn't on the table? Because it hasn't been on the table, and now that it is, we get so many people coming forward. But I can appreciate someone like yourself that volunteers their time, that gets out and works with our youth. And I would hope that for those that may not get any ARPA funding, that you would still dedicate your time and your energy for the youth in this community. And really understand that in order for us to move forward, money is a great thing, but it is not the cure to rescue this city's youth. It is not the cure. It is gonna take pure time and energy and true intention, true intention. So again, excited for ARPA. I'm so glad that you are one, and you are one of, there are many of us that are doing things like that. It's just that we're so scattered. And it's unfortunate that we don't have a committee that just goes and that can handle all of this. But thank you for your service, sir. That's all I have.
Thank you, Seth. Next, we have Councilwoman Bench. I'm sorry. I had to look down to see. Okay. We have Councilwoman Bench.
Yes. Okay, well, thank you and good evening to everyone. I too would like to thank our public speakers for coming tonight. Ms. Williams, I don't have a truck and I'm on a side street, so I do understand what you're saying. And my side street's like literally two blocks long, so it's probably not the number one priority. But what I will say is that we have enough salt usually, that's not an issue. But we have manpower and vehicle issues. So unfortunately, by the time they get to those main drags that you've mentioned in your, you know, three minutes that you know are the hospital routes and the main roads, frequently by the time they get around, it's melted. And it's unfortunate for anybody who lives on a side street. But it's not because anybody's being deliberately overlooked. It's just the nature of trying to do that when we don't have enough employees, we don't have enough trucks, and mother nature is very disagreeable, you know, or weird, clearly as we've seen over the last couple of weeks. So we do apologize for stuff like that, but we understand you're not alone. But I had to say too, if, with the holiday being at the end of the week, I know all of us are gonna be gathering, please consider, silly as it may still seem, after three years in a pandemic, consider wearing your masks wherever you are gathered indoors, crack windows if you can. And also, please think about getting your booster if you haven't gotten your, if you've already gotten your vaccines. We have the drive-through at Sears, and I had no trouble whatsoever getting in and doing appointments through like Whitey and Walgreens if you don't have the ability to get through to one of the Saginaw County locations. It's just so important that we each do our individual part to make sure that this ends, because we're going on three years. And this is exhausting to have to continue to like live like this and be afraid of, you know, who's sneezing and why and things like that. So, you know, and get your flu shot too while you're at it. And the last thing I would add is that a few meetings ago, I mentioned that I was putting together a work group comprised of county representatives, city staff, and a few other key people from our historic district commission. And we were going to put together a work group to move forward on some issues with the land bank because we hear from local and council members about the land bank and their policies and the way they operate and the impact it has on us. We have some action items and we're gonna continue meeting, and I'm very pleased with how, what the meeting went, and I really appreciate our staff taking time to be there. But I would say that one of the best, I think, good, you know, pieces of good news coming out of that was that the land bank has, for the time being, decided to not tear down 708 East Tennessee. We have another historic building that has a potential at new life. Instead of tearing it down for now, they are going to stabilize the building. So I don't know anything more than that, beyond that, but I think that's an exciting first step because we can't afford to lose any more of our historic buildings, I think. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Next, we have Mayor Pro Tim Balls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank all the speakers for coming out and addressing your concerns today at the meeting. And I would like to give a special thank you to everybody here that has, wear more than one hat in our community. Probably 80% of the people in the audience today do volunteer work. I can't imagine all the volunteers that we have in the city of Saginaw, if we multiply that times hours of pay, there's a lot of money that we are investing in our community and in our youth. And we need to continue to do that every day of our lives to help our citizens out. I'd like to thank Mr. Hill for the work that he's trying to do after 37 years in prison. He come out and trying to give, you know, that's a beautiful thing. And we need to support you to make sure you can help do that because there's a lot of children out here that don't have mentors. And a mentor is no one, but someone that's touring another kid through life. We all have our ups and downs. And everybody know the economic situation that we have in the city of Saginaw with General Motors leaving. You know, for centuries, not centuries, but for decades, we had a place that can employ any male or female that wanted a job after getting out of school, they can always go to the plant and get a job. We don't have that no more. And when we study, we're losing those jobs. General Motors here produces gas engines. Now we're going to electric motors and stuff like that. So is the, is studies streaking, the economy is studying shrinking, and we're steadily becoming a service community. And we need to have some way, some way possible to mentor our youth so that they don't continue to think that they can get that General Motors job when it's not there. We gotta change their mindset and let them go back to school or get a skilled trades. You know, the skilled trade industry is booming. Anybody want a job in skilled trade, you apply yourself, I guarantee you can get one. Working with the youth organization that I work with, employers are calling us, asking us for people to get involved in skilled trades. So we need to turn, tell our young ladies and young men to get involved in skilled trades. Normally, the employer pays for the schooling, they don't end up with no debt, and they're not making good money. I know the alignment, that works for Consumer Powers, some of these guys make almost a quarter of a million dollars a year. They get paid for sleeping sometime, knowing that they on their job during the storms and stuff. I know we need pipe fitters and electricians and all these different trades. So I would invite anybody to, you gotta use, try steering them towards those trades. And I guarantee they'll start feeling better about themselves and about their family life when they can start fixing some things around their own house. So I want to thank you, people that volunteer, you know, because you're doing a great job in the city of Saginaw. Other than that, I don't have any other comments. I want you, everybody, to have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year myself. And Happy New Year again. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
You have Councilmember Scherzer.
Oh, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting. I keep forgetting. I start over here. Please forgive me. Next, we have Councilwoman Scherzer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you to all of our public speakers. As always, we appreciate you coming in. And for those watching at home, we're here to hear, we are here to hear your concerns. And I definitely appreciate it. I do want to just say two things, and congratulations to our six new probationary Saginaw Police Department officers that were sworn in today. So welcome to those individuals. And then there are just, it is, there are just a few more days before Christmas, so please consider shopping your small businesses, local businesses, and the businesses right here in the city of Saginaw. There are great things that you can pick up and buy for stocking stuffers, gifts for your friends, family, or loved ones. So please consider small business as you shop the last two or, well, three or four days before Christmas. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everyone.
Now it's my turn. Now it's my turn. First of all, let me say this. This has been a year that I hope to never see again. I hope to never see it. This year, to me, is worser than it was last year because of the economics. Not only did I see so much, I guess I'm a dreamer, and I just believe that everybody, we need to learn how to get along. What I went through with the council in 2021, hear me, it will not happen in 2022. I am a leader, and a leader leads. A leader does not bow down, and it does not curl tails and run. And I'm saying that to say this, y'all, I'm walking into a new season, and I really want you all to walk with me. If we talk about ARPA dollars, one chance in a million for us to do this. And if we're gonna do it, we gotta do it together. I can't do it without you guys. I can't do it without these other eight people on the side of me. But what I will not do, I will not tolerate insubordination. No. I've never worked a job, I've never disrespected my boss. We're not gonna do that. The other thing, now I'm gonna get back to the real fun thing, y'all. On Wednesday at Charlie's Place, if you didn't know, we do Santa Claus. We're giving out over 500 gifts to people who put their names in. This year, it was difficult. It was difficult. People don't have it, for real. I've got people calling me every day, asking me about baskets of food. Last year this time, I didn't have that. This year, I'm going through that. On Wednesday from 4:30 to, I have to look at my notes, 4:30 to 6:30 at Charlie's Place, at Charlie Platinum on Bay Road in Court, we're taking pictures with Santa. Every child that comes through that line, if we have to go and wrap more toys, we'll get a gift. Christmas Jesus is the reason for the season, not us. And if we're gonna give, I'm gonna give to the babies. The Hispanic, the Hispanic, the Hispanic community did the angel tree on Saturday. I apologize, but I heard it was fabulous. I'm still in some of your ideas. Today, I started wrapping over 500 gifts that I'm handing out next week, and I will continue to wrap. I heard all about how beautiful it was, and I'm like, okay, it's not gonna be me, not me. So I want you guys to know, thank you so much. See, I'm humble. Madam Clerk.
We are now at reports from the city manager.
45 minutes. Yes, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first, I would like to thank Ms. Kipke and Mr. Rasmussen for coming to council. I will let council know that Ms. Kipke has been emailing me everything she finds on ARPA and the arts. So I did ask Phil Carwatt to ask her to come to council and let you all know. And I think that's a good reminder. I know a few council members have said that let's, when we're looking at ARPA and thinking about ARPA, let's not forget the groups and the people who have been volunteering for the city and providing services for so many years. That's within our, within our arts community. They've been working hard to find funding for so many years to help provide things to do for kids and also the arts education and getting people involved. So I would support them. And I know you've had a few other people that you've talked about, those types of programs as well. And not to forget anyone, but we think of the Japanese Tea House, not fond of that, only when they need repairs. Hoyt, the Friends of Hoyt Park, I know they've probably talked to several of you as well. They've done so much over the years. So I think we have to remember those organizations as well. And I would, I'm deferring that thank you on the water treatment plant to the staff at the Water Works and Paul Reinsch. They've been, they handle that decoration every year and they do a great job. And it's something that they've wanted to keep doing for the community for several years. So I, and I think with the staff there, they will continue doing that for several years. And this next item you have heard for several years in a- And this next item, you have heard for several years in a row, but I do, because it's a great accomplishment. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has announced that the city of Saginaw has received the GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its budget for fiscal year beginning July one, 2021. The GFOA has presented this award to the city of Saginaw's Office of Management and Budget. And this is the fourteenth year in a row that the city of Saginaw's Office of Management and Budget has received this award. So, great job by. And I don't think the city received that award before Yolanda came to the city. So she's really taken that on and done a great job. In order to receive the budget award, the city must achieve the highest principles of governmental budgeting. These guidelines are designed to assess how well a city's budget serves as a policy document, financial plan, and operations guide, and a communications device. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four categories and the fourteen mandatory criteria within those categories to receive the award. And I'll add that the Budget Office over the, over the past few years has also added a lot in addition to those things, informing some of their two-page or shorter outlines of the budget that I think really helps people understand the way that the city finances work. So, great job by Ms. Jones. And in the same line, Jamie Rivette from Yo and Yo is here this evening to present our annual audit. So I'd like to thank Finance Director Lori Brown and the other city staff members who worked to put the information together that's necessary to complete the audit. I've mentioned a few times that in the two thousand six, seven, eight time period, the city was six months or later at completing their audit, and they did not complete a lot of the financial reconciliations on a timely basis. And now routinely, our auditors are here in December to provide you the completed audit. And they've been done for a few weeks, so if they could have, they could have come sooner. So it's a great job by the staff and fiscal services. And we have a number of other departments that assist with that. I'll ask Jamie to come up and present her audit findings, our audit results.
Thank you. Well, good evening, and thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Jamie Rivette. I'm an audit partner at Yo and Yo. And tonight, I'm going to go over the highlights from the audit. So we'll go ahead and get started. So first of all, just wanted to point out really what you're looking for. So you are looking for the audit opinion on the financial statements. And an audit opinion can only be issued by an independent licensed CPA firm. And really, what management is responsible for is the preparation and fair presentation of those financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, as well as the design, the implementation, and maintenance of the internal controls. And then as your auditors, what happens is, is my team and I, we come in and audit that information presented, and then we issue the city an opinion on those financial statements. And you are issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance offered. It means it's a clear opinion with no material modifications that need to be made. In addition, the city also received an award for Financial Reporting of Excellence from the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, for the June thirtieth, 2020 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. So just wanted to point that out. That's a great accomplishment and a good job to all involved in getting that completed. So now we'll pop in and look at some of the numbers. So the first couple of slides I have are focused on your general fund or your operating fund. And this pie chart here breaks down your revenue and other financing sources. And you can see where the majority of your revenue is coming from. And I'll just point out a couple of key points here. So in total, the city did receive almost forty-two million dollars in revenue through June thirtieth, 2021, with the largest section being your city income tax, which makes up about thirty-four percent of the total general fund revenue. And that total dollar amount was up about two point five percent over last year. And then we have your intergovernmental dollars, which is the gray section here. The majority of that is the funds that you receive from the state of Michigan for your state shared revenue, and that made up about nine million dollars out of that nine point four million. We did see an increase this year for your grants and contributions. So you did have a increase in the federal grants. Most of them are COVID-related dollars that we saw come through, about two point one million, as well as an increase in some of the contributions for public safety, too. So far, fire and police did receive some additional contributions this year. Your property taxes, the nine percent, the orange section on the bottom there of the three point seven million, that was pretty flat compared to last year, too. So right in line with the property tax revenue the city received last year. Now, here we've been showing your revenue since 2015 and through 2021. And you can see that we did have an increase this year compared to last year, which I did just mention that the majority of that is related to your federal grants. And those grants are all restricted for specific purposes. So just keep that in mind. It's not like that the city received a huge increase in, in revenue that could be spent on, you know, whatever the city desires. The, the increase in your unassigned fund balance was just about seven hundred fifty thousand compared to last year. So when you look at this, just keep that in mind, that a lot of that, the donations for the police and fire, those have to be spent on police and fire. Same with the federal grants. There are specific restrictions on to what those can be spent on. Now, this pie chart is, again, your general fund, but now we're looking at the expense side. So we're looking at the money going out of the city was a little over thirty-five point six million for the year. And you can see the green section there on the bottom is your public safety. So that made up the largest chunk of your general fund expenditures of about sixty-one percent. That does include both fire and police. So fire was about eight point six million, with police around thirteen point two million of that total, twenty-one point eight million. And then we have general government, that was a little over five million dollars. So we do follow the state chart of accounts. It really tells us how we have to categorize your departments and your functions as to what's included in there. So that does include city council, city manager, employee services. It also includes your retiree health insurance, which was about two point one million dollars that the city did pay this year. So the similar chart is we had for revenue. I have one included for your expenditures and transfers. And you can see from 2020 to 2021 that the expenditures really were almost flat compared to the prior year. So now we'll switch gears and talk about your water and your sewer funds. So this is a new chart I put in here this year. Just wanted to point out a couple of things as we're looking at that. When you're looking at your sewer and your water funds, we have what we call operating revenue, so your charges for services, and then we have operating expenses. So how much does it cost to, to run the water in the sewer departments? And you can see on this slide that we did have operating losses in both of those funds. We have some items in non-operating revenue and expense. So those are if we had federal grants and some interest expense on the debt payments that we have. But in total, so the bottom line that you see there really shows that our expenses are exceeding our income in both of those funds. And it was similar to last year, too. So just wanted to point that out, that we are seeing a decrease there in that net position for both of those funds, which we did see last year as well. And I know in my communications with the city manager, we did meet and go through the draft financials that he had mentioned that there's going to be a rate study coming up, too. And I'm looking at the rates just to make sure that we are getting funds in there as our fund, or our net position for the sewer fund was at six point eight million. So if we see two years in a row similar to what we had, you know, we're going to be in the negative for the net position. I also wanted to point out the amount of contributions that are being paid into your pension and your OPEB fund. So here, we started our OPEB trust fund for 2020. So that's why you see we do have the orange section, didn't start into 2020. As we did start a trust fund, the city started a trust fund that year. So then we started having contributions that were going into that trust fund. So for 2021, we had a little over sixteen million of pension contributions. And then we had a little over eleven point three million going into your other post-employment benefit plan, too. So when we're looking at pension, those contributions that the city is making to that plan was sixteen million ninety-seven thousand. But the benefits that are actually being paid from that plan was almost thirty million dollars. It was twenty-nine point eight million. So it's really hard to make a dent in that net pension liability when the amount that we're contributing is not matching or equaling the amount that's going out, too, to the benefit plans. And same for your OPEB, that one was a bit closer. The contributions being made into the plan were eleven point three million, and the benefits being paid out were about ten point three. So in addition to auditing the financial statements, as your auditors, the standards that we follow also require us to gain an understanding of your internal controls. And in reconciling our, the information and doing our audit procedures, we did have a few material journal entries this year that we did record. So we do have a material weakness noted for that. It is a cumbersome process, just want to point that out, that I think near, there's nearly a hundred journal entries that the city posts just to close out the end of the year. So there's a lot of stuff happening at the end of the year to get the books and records in order for us to come in. And, you know, we did have some turnover in the controller's office this year. So we did, we did lose some of that knowledge and history in the background there. We did not have any significant deficiencies that were noted in our audit. And, and then we also do a single audit. So because the city does receive and spend more than seven hundred fifty thousand in federal grants, the guidelines and standards we follow require us to then do what we call a single audit. So it is federal grants-driven, it's a compliance audit. We did test your program this year of your, the CRF funds, the Coronavirus Relief Fund was the major program. And we did not have any findings or comments or recommendations related to that. And then my last slide that I have here, just to point out some future challenges. We know that the retirement costs continue to increase. So those are the legacy costs for your current and prior employees. We know the buildings, the equipment, and the city infrastructure, you know, continues to age. And currently, there's no specific revenue stream coming in to help pay for those, too. So just to keep that in mind, that we know upgrades and repairs are necessary to keep the city functioning. And then we do have the two unfunded obligations. Your pension obligation, which is about a hundred eighty million, and then your OPEB obligation, which is about three hundred and three million as well. So with that, I just wanted to thank Tim, Yolanda, Lori, and their teams. It really is a joint effort to come in and get that audit done. I appreciate their professionalism and working through. They really try and have everything ready for us so we can, you know, be in and on site and get everything we need to get out. And as Tim mentioned, we did have this done the end of November. So we're just waiting for the right time to come and present the results. So are there any questions that I could answer for you?
Do we have any questions from counsel?
I had one real quick. When it comes to other revenue and then other financing sources, so it'd be the fourth and then the seventh, given financing sources, what would that be?
Yep, let me grab my, just one second, that's why I pulled this up here. So typically, that would be transfers in or transfers out. And then if you have any loans or grants, we have loan proceeds that we would show in there. So let me just check for you quick for your general fund. I can tell if you had any this year. So for general fund, we had transfers in of about a hundred and forty-seven thousand. So that would be money coming in from other funds. And then we had transfers out of six hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So those stay within the city, they just go between the different funds. And you also had issuance of debt of about five hundred and fifty-two thousand this year, too, which were for some vehicles, I believe. Is that right?
Vehicle, from what department?
That was in your general fund.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, counsel persons? Thank you so much. It's amazing how, when you sit here and actually hear, when you come in and you do these audits, it's really amazing to hear that we really are on point, half on point. And for the community, I like it because you can actually see that we are transparent. We're not trying to hide anything. So I want to thank you so much for coming and doing that audit for us. And congratulation, our, our, our fiscal department as well.
Thank you, Jamie. And Madam Mayor, that concludes the management update.
You know, it's the end of the year, so everybody trying to go home, so. This was a quick manager update. Okay, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, I had.
I'm sorry, do we have any questions for the city manager?
I had a few, yes. We had spoken during this week about the premium pay that we had talked about at the last council meeting and the meeting before. And then you had emailed me some information about that. Regarding that email on November fourth, it stated that, that we're a, this was to the U.S. Treasury Department, that we are a metropolitan city in the state of Michigan and need a clarity as it relates to premium pay. We have a suggestion of a premium pay sector employees of a nursing, of a nursing home for premium pay. These employees have not been deemed essential workers by the governor. They are not municipal employees, is it eligible expenditures under this current guidelines? Who had deemed that they were not essential workers by the governor?
The governor, I believe. They're not receiving premium pay, is that correct?
Premium pay from ARPA.
Right, which the governor, the CEO of the state, and chief administrative officer determined who was essential workers to receive that in the healthcare.
But the governor had deemed them essential workers twice.
Not for pay. The specific question we were asking Treasury was regarding premium pay. And the governor is not, has not authorized them to receive premium pay.
But when we say deemed, she did deem them essential workers. On June.
Not for, councilman, not for the purpose of premium pay, that was the reason for the question. And that's what you asked me to send, we had already sent it.
Correct.
But not. This is, this is not something that is, is arguable. In my opinion, the governor did not list them as essential workers for premium pay.
Wait, real quick, I'm going to.
Oh, please for the mayor.
But he, she did deem them as essential workers twice with, with the GI Bill. And then also on June seventeenth, she had Essential Worker Appreciation Day. And where, real quick, man, please, where it says, under her office, during the COVID-19 pandemic, essential workers have continued to work on the front lines to protect the health, well-being, and safety of Michigan residents. And whereas essential workers include healthcare workers, drug care workers, nursing home workers, local public healthcare workers, educators, and school staff, food service and grocery workers, gas station attendants, construction workers, utility workers, post officers, social service workers, delivery service workers.
Counsel for the red, point of order.
What, what was the point of order?
Just one moment, point of order. The question that you're asking is a question that we've been over several times. I guess, is there a new question that you're asking?
Point of personal privilege, I'd like to continue and read the rest of the governor's proclamation. Post office workers, delivery service workers, law enforcement officers, security workers, correction officers, manufacturers who have converted to making respirators, face shields, hand sanitizer, janitors, transit workers, truck drivers, emergency service workers, and other public servants. Whereas they, essential workers have selflessly put their lives on the risk to continue to fulfill the critical job so we can all be safe at home while having access to basic life necessities. That is a proclamation from the governor stating that they are essential workers.
Not for premium pay.
But that, that.
That's the question we're asking Treasury. That's the que, okay, I mean, let's be transparent here. You want the healthcare workers that came to counsel to receive premium pay.
I would like every. I would like everybody that is listed as essential care workers, not only on the GI Bill from April 29th, but from this proclamation from the governor's office on June 17th to be considered for premium pay.
So you, you understand that we've had two different opinions from different sources stating these healthcare workers are not eligible for City of Saginaw ARPA premium pay, correct?
When, when were they not deemed on this?
Plant Moran has communicated that during the meeting.
To who?
Councilman, when he gave his presentation, he answered that question.
From Plant Moran?
Correct.
And then I gave you additional information from James Moore that stated that they would be-
You found one consulting firm that agreed with you.
That has more-
Not to me, sir.
Clients than Plant Moran does.
It's, it's not material to what we're doing, Plant Moran is our controller.
Is it still the city's position that the governor had not deemed them as essential workers?
I would state they are not deemed-
Point of order. We are, point of order. Point of order. We are so far off. We are so far off, y'all. No disrespect, Councilman Flores, none, please, don't take it as one. We have went back and forth, back and forth with this. Once again, I make a recommendation that you and Mr. Morales, again with any other council person that still has some doubts, set a meeting up with the city manager. Because at this point, we'll be here all night on premium pay that we've been told we cannot do. So my suggestion, instead of us going back and forth, back and forth, because we supposed to respect one another, that's what we talked about early. So that's my recommendation, I don't know how the other council feels, is that we, that these two individuals get together and discuss this between them. Because we've talked about this at the table. Plant Moran has talked about this, we've received emails or communications. If you get a communication and it's not to your liking, I need everybody to understand from the audience, whenever we ask the city manager for a question, or someone calls, or I mean, someone texts him, he does a blanket for all of us, so we all will know the same answers. Not only does he do that, the attorney, who is our attorney who we pay, gives us the direction to go. What we're not going to do with the ARPA dollars is start off violating what we can't do to do it to please people. We're not doing that. I don't believe in giving money back, and we not getting ready to start, city manager. So we will follow the guidelines and the rules that have been set forth for us. Because otherwise, you know what, and our Lord knows, we could send the money back. I think Saginaw City needs the money. I don't want, I don't even want us to contemplate that. But if we're gonna keep going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, what are we gonna get done? Seriously. I am so sorry, I don't mean to go to a ransom or a tantrum, but enough is enough.
Mayor, you had another council member that-
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Since this conversation has continued, for the sake of-
You need to pull your mic up, because we cannot hear you, I'm sorry.
Since this conversation has continued to this point, I think it has to be stated for the sake of transparency that Councilman Flores works for SEIU Healthcare that directly represents Hoyt Nursing Home. And I think that the citizens need to know that if this conversation is going to continue, especially since it's continued in this fashion.
And correct. And what I have contention with is that it says "a nursing home" in the email. I am asking for all nursing homes, two of which I do not represent, to be able to be eligible for premium pay. Additionally, I am asking that everybody that has been identified by the governor on June 16th, 17th, be also considered for premium pay, and that those people are deemed by the governor as essential workers. My contention with that question that was submitted to the US Treasury Department on November 4th is that it was misrepresenting what the governor said, and that, in fact, all the people that she had proclaimed, not only in the GI Forum on April 29th, but also the folks that were represented on June 17th, all be considered for premium pay, private and public sector, which I have found more information that I've given you to consider. And that this email that was sent after the conversation that myself and Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia had is not representative of the facts as they, as they currently state.
That email was sent prior to, Mayor, I've answered this question multiple times.
Thank you so much.
But if it's incorrect, can we revise that?
I don't believe that it's incorrect in, in the circumstance of which it was sent.
It states that the governor did not deem them as essential workers, but the governor did do that on two separate occasions.
This is so appropriate. My question to this is, how in the hell are we gonna figure out their, what their premium pay is? Tim has already provided to us what we have to do for our own staff based on their wages and based the way that the law is written. So how are we gonna do this for companies that we don't even own? When, that's the reason why we're talking about what we're talking about. And if you do this and you, you actually give money to all these different firms that are here that you just listed, what goes to the community? What goes to the programs that they just brought in here tonight? That 52 million is going to be gone, and that's after we take out our loss in revenue, which is about 20 million, which puts us at about 32. What do we got left? They're working. And I understand that they worked to support this community, don't get me wrong, but how do we go through this whole thing? And my question is, how are you gonna figure out what we pay those people that we don't have to pay back because some firm comes in here and says that we did it wrong? I am angry.
Mayor, you had another-
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Sylvia.
I'm, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Let me say this, because it's, it's really hard, I mean, I think that we do have a lot of essential workers who worked, and we can do this one of two ways. We can pay all the essential workers, which is probably a lot of people, and do nothing to improve our city. Or, we can try to bring Saginaw back and follow the guidelines that are set forth by the Treasury Department to us. So, as you can see, we are at a dilemma, even at this table. So, I don't know if, if it's resolved, Ms. Councilman Flores and Mr. Morales and whoever, if you guys need to get together, you know, I hate to be a mediator, but I'll be a mediator. You know, we can sit and we can talk and we can try to get some clarity, because it has been said over and over again, what we can and can't do. And so I'm, I'm not disrespecting Mr. Flores, nor do I want to disrespect our city manager. So, what's the, is there a pleasure, is there a motion, do we move on? Madam Clerk, we go on?
Your next order of business is the consent agenda.
You do it.
But, well, I would, I understand the questions, but before staff puts more time into this, we should probably hear from council if the entire council wants us to proceed with reviewing premium pay for people who are not employed by the City of Saginaw.
I think that we're looking for a motion, do we continue to move forward? We're looking at premium pay for those who don't-
I don't believe we're at a point in the agenda where a motion would be a-
Okay.
We're still in manager's report, so I think at this point, if there's any other questions for the city manager, those should be asked, but otherwise, then we should move on.
No problem, thank you, Madam Attorney. Yes, Ms. Sylvia.
Okay, and I'm gonna bring the Bible in here, in order I get it, get understanding. I hate for people to leave and not understand, and for our constituents to think this is the way we conduct business. But if a person doesn't understand is one thing, and if you don't want to understand, that's another. But my suggestion, can I make a suggestion, I'm just saying, is to, um, thank you, is to, is for Councilman Flores and city manager, maybe contact the governor, whoever, and do a Zoom, whatever, to get this clear, because I would hate to feel a particular way, and I would, I'm sure that you all wouldn't want to feel a particular way, I wouldn't want you all to feel a particular way, but it's getting really frustrating to me. But, yeah, I think a meeting needs to be had, and whomever you all are getting the information from, bring that together and come get some clarity before you bring it back to council, because we're still looking very ugly. We're looking ugly. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, and I appreciate her comments, because I just want to know where, don't we have clarity? Because we have received multiple communication, and the information Councilman Flores has received, has his information as well. Where I'm seeing this is this that we have two people with information, who we are aware of their information, that are just not going to agree on that. And so for us, we shouldn't constantly wait and have more conversations when, at this point, we were seeing multiple correspondences, we are aware where the manager stands, we're aware of Councilman, where Councilman Flores stands, and we just leave it there and move on towards committing, creating this commission so we can start moving things along.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we, I hear what we're saying here as far as information. That's fine. So for full transparency, I'm gonna use myself as an example. I work my day job for Buna Vista Township. I would be dead wrong to sit here as a city councilman and try to get funding from the City of Saginaw to go to Buna Vista Township, which is my day job. That is wrong, morally, ethically wrong to do that. So regardless of where the information is coming from, we as council, our day job doesn't belong here, period, in any way, shape, form or fashion. So I can appreciate Councilman Flores's information, but he is not the person to be delivering that information to us, the constituents, anybody else from this table.
Anyone else?
And for clarification, I'm not motioning yet, at all, to provide premium pay for anybody other than public essential care workers to the City of Saginaw.
Councilman Flores, I appreciate that, but what you fail to understand is, you are still representing the agency that you work for and guising it under everybody else that is not, you know, essential workers, which you, I don't, I don't know why you not being able to see that, but that is what it is. You are trying to get what you want by including everybody. That's not the correct thing to do from this table.
So if we were to give premium pay to everybody excluding the people that you think that I represent, would that be deemable? Because that is one of the four buckets that we have, premium pay, and thank you for Councilman Ostache for bringing this up, but it is our responsibility to take it upon ourselves to figure out a fair and equitable format to give the people that have been working through this pandemic, risking their lives, continuing to do so with this new variant, a premium pay. That is within the spirit of the bill.
You are, you are correct, but you still fail to understand your conflict.
Well, I have, there's no other council member that has brought this up.
Because we're not supposed to, if we're working for the agency that we're trying to get money for.
But there are a whole bunch of folks that aren't working.
Point of order. Point of order. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything else?
No.
Report.
No, ma'am.
I did not mean for the end of our year meeting to end this hour note. So can we continue, Madam Clerk?
Yes, your next order of business is the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on SGTV Channel 191. I need a motion, I need a motion for the consent agenda leaving room for exception.
Support.
Do we have anything that we want to, that we want to?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, on this paper is number 19, but what we have, what we were sent is number 20.
Okay.
You could have 19 items.
Nineteen, nineteen.
Only because we removed, okay, I'm sorry, my apologies. Well, it would be number, number 19.
Nineteen. Yes, sir.
Mine would be 17.
Nineteen, seventeen.
And I believe mine would be 11 and 20.
Eleven and 20 is not there anymore.
I'm sorry, okay, nevermind then.
So is it 11?
Just 11, thank you.
Excuse me, but could his 20 actually be the 19, the same one that I? Okay.
Yeah, you got an amendment, copy.
Correct, 19, please.
Anymore? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Item number 11 is to approve the professional services agreement with Manny Boersnick for an annual amount not to exceed $18,720 for fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2028 for the Saginaw Arts and Enrichment Commission, that was Councilmember Flores.
Yeah, thank you so much, and I do apologize, was the language in here about a fundraising originally? I do apologize, I don't have it up on my phone.
You have missed two, Kyle, who can help you?
Thank you.
Yeah, what's that? So, as Nancy Kepke, who, she's one of two employees that work for the Saginaw Arts and Enrichment Commission, which works out of the Anderson Enrichment Center, and then there's agreements between the city and them to provide certain services, but what they do is they pretty much pay for themselves. So through their grant writing abilities with the community foundation and other organizations, they're able to raise funds that pretty much pay for themselves, but they're limited in hours and resources, so them, Nancy and Marcia, who are currently two of the employees that are employed through the city, receive benefits and everything else like other city employees. In order to save money on the benefits and that, we're recommending, they need help over there to do some of this grant writing and that, so this individual will do that under this contract that then saves us from having to pay, you know, different health benefits and stuff like that. It's gonna be part-time work, what they're gonna do is reduce their hours to allow compensation for this employee until the point they're able to receive more funds and maybe have more hours by this employee work. So I don't know if that answers the question you were looking for, but-
And then the $18,720 would go to that employee?
That's gonna be a maximum amount, so it's gonna be $18 an hour, not to exceed that amount, which I don't anticipate it will.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I move to approve consent agenda item number 11.
Second.
Is being moved to support it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk.
Item number 17 is approve the purchase with Kraft Power Corporation, a sole source, for $90,020 for repairs to generator number one at the water plant for the Water and Wastewater Treatment Services Department, Water Treatment Division, Councilmember Copeland.
Mr. Paul is coming forward.
I know his fault. My question for you is one, thank you again for your presentation that you, myself and some colleagues, and in that presentation, you talked about that time, that if that generate, the challenges with this generator, and how much time you have to get to that to get the pumps going.
Yes, sir.
Which is very important. And so I want to make sure, is this going to be that change where it will increase that time, or this, this repair is just gonna make sure we stay at that? Because I don't want to give the time, because I know security reasons, things like that. So is the time gonna increase with this repair, or it's just where we still are?
This is to keep us at status quo with the backup that we currently have. The two generators that we have are 1980's vintage, and this one has, we suspect, a crack in the head of the engine. So this is to repair that crack, investigate it, repair it if it's possible.
Okay, I was hoping-
Okay, I was hoping to increase the time, but okay, I approve this, so thank you for that information. I was just wondering if it was, we were going to have a yea and increase in that time, but I get it.
To do that, we have to proceed with the elevated storage that I were talking about.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you so much. I move to approve consent agenda number 17.
Support.
It's been moved as second. Any more questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Item number 19, approve to grant the city manager the authority to review and, if deemed appropriate, execute any and all documents related to the proposed partial settlement of the national opioid litigation with Johnson &amp; Johnson, Amerisource, Cardinal, and McKesson. Councilmember Lamar Sylvia and I believe Councilmember Flores.
I guess maybe the language and what it's asking to do, I did send this concern to the city manager, but I guess again, for maybe clarity, if you could explain that, because I do, I guess I have a few problems with the word authority review and if deemed appropriate, execute any and all documents related to the proposed partial settlement, and you did, et cetera, et cetera. But you did say that by January 2nd or 3rd, and we wouldn't have a meeting by then. Can you kind of expound on that, please?
Yeah, so we are in, I might leave something else. I hope the city clerk and the city attorney prepared this, but the documents to participate are due by January 2nd, and we will not have a meeting prior to that. We don't have the documents yet. We requested them, but they're not, they haven't been received by us. So we would just like approval for them. When they come in, the city attorney will review them for form and substance, and then I would sign them to execute them.
Okay, so what does this do for the city, this particular?
This lawsuit?
Yes.
I will ask the city attorney to explain.
Okay. Sure, so within the terms of the settlement or the proposed settlement agreement, there's $23 billion that are getting put into a fund to be divvied up nationwide, with approximately 3.4% of that amount to be allocated to the state of Michigan. Communities have the opportunity to participate in this settlement agreement, which could bring dollars into the community to be used for primarily things related to the opioid epidemic, including substance use, prevention, and treatment. The thing I think a lot of communities are looking at is both training and purchase of and supply of Narcan for treating overdoses and that sort of thing.
So would that be something brought to the council? How to utilize those dollars? Would it already be set?
No, there's specific requirements, as I understand it's set up within the participation agreements. We expect to, hope to receive those tomorrow as to how the funding can be used, and then it would just go into OMB and be filtered administratively as to how it would be.
Okay.
Are you all right?
No.
There was a bug.
Yeah, the bug. I'm sorry. Nothing wrong with laughter, but it's all. We had that bug fright up here too, but anyway, oh, Jesus, yeah, man, you forget. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, and I would further note that by ordinance, with all contracts, the city manager is authorized to approve this stuff since the city attorney asked to form. We're bringing this to council effectively because we don't know, sometimes in settlement agreements, sometimes in grant agreements, we see language that the legislative body has to approve. We don't know if that language is in there, so we're seeking that approval now just to be sure when we get those documents, we have it if we choose to proceed.
So are you sure you're going to get this by the 2nd? It took that long, that's my, I mean.
Well, we just got the information last week. I know that staff already worked towards registering to get the documents, and we're expecting that the documents will be received for review tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Make a motion to move it over.
Sorry, I had a question on it. May I have a question on it real quick?
Yes, yes, he also.
He made an exception to it.
Okay, okay, so yeah. Even if he didn't, it was yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Would the documents be able to be shared with council upon request?
Certainly, I mean, you guys are welcome to see any of the contracts. That's not normal procedure, but you're entitled to see any of the contracts the city understands too.
And also the content of the data, would that just be people that had been given Narcan before, or I guess I'm having a hard time understanding what the, how that would be deemed, that the money would come into Saginaw? Would it just be given any type of data from law enforcement on how they administer Narcan or how?
Well, that was just an example of a potential use of any funds that came into the community. So the funding is specifically to be used for opioid remediation. That's kind of the casual term that we've seen associated with this settlement. Purchasing Narcan and having training is an example of something that would fall under opioid remediation. It would be an allowed use.
Okay, and then we would have to submit the information that we have currently around overdoses or?
We're only submitting the doc, the signed document to participate in the lawsuit. I think after, after they receive all of their submissions by a specific date, then the state will probably decide how many communities qualify and what payout, payout to each community. I believe the payout's over 20 years as well for the settlement. So it would be an annual allocation for 20 years, but I don't think we have information about how they'll determine how much each community gets, and they probably don't know until they see who's participating or how many communities are participating.
Okay.
And the total pot nationwide is dependent on how many communities participate nationwide.
Yeah.
The more communities that enter into the participation agreement, the larger the pot will ultimately be.
All right, thank you.
Any more discussion?
I'll move number 19.
Discussion, you should have a motion at this point. Those were the two exceptions, so.
I move to approve consent agenda item number 19.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we're now at board, commission, and committee.
Does anyone on council have any report on any boards or commissions that they went to or meetings that they went to in the community?
I did have an airport board meeting on the 16th, and we just discussed general business that going to the airport, and they're trying to get new business, new flights to come out of the Tri-City Airport, and they got a lot of repairs going on out there too, so that's about all.
Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at appointment of board and commission members.
We have two reappointments and one appointment. Can we do them together?
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved as second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Next is ordinance introduction. We have one tonight. It's an ordinance to add low-income housing tax exemption for defined sponsor to table seven, I'm sorry, table eight, low-income housing tax exemption by amending ordinance 044 of the table of special ordinances.
I need a motion to introduce.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This motion will be laid over under charter provisions. Madam Clerk.
We are at ordinance consideration and adoption. Our first one is to amend section 153.576, membership, and section 153.587, vote required to reverse decision limitations of power of chapter 153 zoning code of Title 15 land usage.
I need a motion to adopt.
Still moved. Second.
It's been moved as second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Our second ordinance tonight is to amend chapter 153 zoning code of Title 15 land usage by amending section 153.538 Historic District Commission, section 153.541, establishing new districts and identifying historic resources landmarks.
I need a motion to adopt.
Still moved. Second.
It's been moved as second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk.
Here are our resolutions. We have one this evening. It's establishing the American Rescue Plan Act Advisory Committee.
I need a motion to adopt.
Still moved. Support.
It's been moved as second. Discussion.
Is that with any changes? How does that actually work with recommendations?
Sign your agenda as the changes were approved at your last meeting on December 6.
Okay, so what about the ones that I sent in?
There's been no motion with regard to.
No, there's been no motion approved for the changes.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Any discussion? Any discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
I didn't, did somebody oppose?
Yeah, I did.
Roll call.
Councilmember Ostache.
Yes.
Councilmember Flores.
No.
Councilmember Copeland.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
No.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Bench.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Balls.
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We have seven yes and two nay. Motion is approved. We are now at miscellaneous.
Is there anything anyone would like to say other than happy, happy Merry Christmas? Yes, ma'am.
I move to indefinitely table consideration of premium pay for non-city employees.
I'll second that.
Excuse me, table would not be appropriate. That's within the same meeting.
Right.
To postpone indefinitely?
Thank you. My apologies.
There's a motion on the floor, oh, excuse me, floor to, Madam Clerk, can you say that, please? I can't talk myself up here.
The premium pay preparation?
For non-city employees.
For non-city employees?
Non-si, well, yes.
There's a motion on the floor. Did I get a second?
You did.
Yeah.
We got a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would just warn against preemptively deciding to do this without clarification from the Treasury Department, from the governor's office, and taking it upon ourselves to exclude a lot of essential care workers that had taken care of our children, taken care of our elderly, taken care of the lot of people that have passed away this last year, just because we think that we have the power to do so. I think that that disenfranchises people. I think it hurts our city, and I, I'm going to vote no.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, I'm calling for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Flores.
No.
Councilmember Copeland.
No.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
No.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Bench.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Balls.
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Yes.
Councilmember Ostache.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We have six yes votes and three nay. Motion is approved.
Do we have anything else on the miscellaneous we want to talk about before the year goes out? Hearing none, I need a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
It's been moved as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Happy, happy Merry Christmas.